Knock it off my head, how about that? Thank you.
Recording in progress.
Hi, good evening. This is the Town of Groton RTM regular meeting for November thirteenth, 2024. Meeting time is seven oh two. I will turn it over to the town clerk for roll call.
Representative Adams.
Here.
Bailey.
Here.
Casper.
Yes.
Dean Shinbra.
Here.
Dudden.
Here.
Fetters. Fitzgerald.
Here.
Fritchie.
Here.
Fox.
Here.
Frickman. Gardner A.
Here.
Here.
Gardner M.
Here.
Gibbs. Good.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
Herbert. Johansson. Kayden. Keep.
Here.
Luck. Massett.
Here.
Matter.
Here.
McGalroy.
Here.
Nyfeld.
Here.
Norman. Aubrey. Perella. Perry. Powers K.
Here.
Powers S.
Here.
Pulaski.
Here.
Omritz.
Here.
VC Williams. Watson.
Here.
Wells.
Here.
Whitney. Here. Umwos.
Here.
Who arrived?
Kayden.
Yep.
Okay.
So that's twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
All right, we have twenty-six members present, so we can declare a quorum, thank you. All right, on to item B, moment of silence, salute to the flag, if you can please stand, if you're able, and brief moment of silence. Representative Nyfeld, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, on to item C, approval of the minutes. If there are no objections, additions, subtractions, and revisions, I will approve these minutes. No, we don't have to. All right, so the October ninth meeting minutes are approved. On to agenda item D, public petitions. This is a portion of the RTM agenda where the RTM welcomes comments from the public. Each presentation should be limited no more than five minutes or less, as directed by the moderator, and if possible, submitted written comments. Presentation should be limited to matters pertinent to the Town of Groton. The moderator or members through the moderator shall ask questions only in order to clarify the speaker's presentation. Responses may be given by the moderator and/or by the town manager. Individuals should state their name and address for the record. If you wish to speak virtually, please register by emailing council@groton-ct.gov, no later than four PM on the day of the meeting. Are there any? There's no one signed up? Is there anyone who wishes to speak for a public petition? Mr. Bird, is there anybody online? All right, so we're gonna move on. All right, receipt of communications, just to let you know, Representative Perry, Perella, and Norman notified the town clerk and myself that they were not going to be here. I also have a receipt of communications from the town mayor. Let me just take a look real quick and see what I can read that off. There is a request for RTM representatives to respond if they are interested in participating in the property review committees. As we discussed in October, there were a few folks that were, that came to me after the meeting, that they said that they were interested. If you are interested, though, you can please contact Mayor Franco or town manager Bert. Okay? And those were for the Groton Heights property and the Pleasant Valley property. All right, any other communications?
Yeah, I've got my hand up.
Yes, Representative Watson?
I just would like to say that I got a nice card from the RTM. I was in the hospital for extended period of time, and I'd just like to say thank you very much for that, I really appreciated it. And I see our town clerk is on, too. I also got a card from the town clerk's office, too, which was really nice, so thank you.
Thank you, we're glad to have you back into the fold. All right, I am going to go out of order right now, if the town manager doesn't mind. So we're going to recognize Board of Ed Chair Massett. However, as I've discussed, there were, there's something on our agenda that has to be acted upon through the Board of Ed Committee, however, the Committee did not get a quorum. So per our rules, which I believe it's six point five point three, I would like to make a, entertain a motion to suspend the rules so that we can act on, excuse me, let me get the number right, so that we can act on item two zero two four dash eight six nine three Groton Public Schools DODEA MCASP grant. Okay, there was a movement by Representative Burrell, seconded by Representative Keep, thank you. Okay, and again, this is just specifically for this items because our rules state that we have to have all items go through committee before the RTM can act on it, since there was a really sustained attempt by the chair to host this meeting, but we did not get a quorum, and I know that the Board of Ed folks are here right now, I would strongly recommend that we vote in favor of this. Is there any other discussion on suspension of the rules for this item? Okay, very well, I will call for a motion to suspend the rules so that we can act on two zero two four dash eight six nine. All those in favor? Oh, before I go, I want to make sure that we have twenty-six members present, so that means that we need to have eighteen members for a two thirds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no, and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Twenty-six, zero, zero. Okay, so now, do we have that, do we have to read the whole resolution?
Yes, that will resolve.
Okay. At least let me find this one here. Do I have that one in here? Sorry, guys. Okay. Okay, I will read, I will read the motion and then we can move on from there. Resolution approving the Board of Education acceptance of a DODEA Military Connected Academic and Support Program Grant. Be it resolved to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of the Department of Defense Education Activity DODEA Military Connected Academic and Support Grant Program MCASP Grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project period from October first, 2024, to May thirty-first, 2029, and to refer the matter to the representative of town meeting per Rule six point five point three. Did I get a?
Say.
All right, who moved that? I couldn't hear. Okay, it seems like everybody could. Seconded by Adams, thank you. Just for some light info on this, if you were here at the last October meeting, we discussed this with Ms. Weigel. We also had a couple of town council meetings where they were discussing that as well. We do have Assistant Superintendent Mancini here, I think we have Chairman Whitloff also, if there's any questions. Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a vote on item two zero two four dash eight six nine Groton Public Schools DODEA MCASP grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no, and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? Okay, the motion carries unanimously. Twenty-six, zero, zero. Okay, so now, do we have that, do we have to read the whole resolution?
Yes, that will resolve.
Okay. At least let me find this one here. Do I have that one in here? Sorry, guys. Okay. Okay, I will read, I will read the motion and then we can move on from there. Resolution approving the Board of Education acceptance of a DODEA Military Connected Academic and Support Program Grant. Be it resolved to approve the Board of Education's acceptance of the Department of Defense Education Activity DODEA Military Connected Academic and Support Grant Program MCASP Grant in the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the project period from October first, 2024, to May thirty-first, 2029, and to refer the matter to the representative of town meeting per Rule six point five point three. Did I get a?
Say.
All right, who moved that? I couldn't hear. Okay, it seems like everybody could. Seconded by Adams, thank you. Just for some light info on this, if you were here at the last October meeting, we discussed this with Ms. Weigel. We also had a couple of town council meetings where they were discussing that as well. We do have Assistant Superintendent Mancini here, I think we have Chairman Whitloff also, if there's any questions. Seeing none, I'm gonna call for a vote on item two zero two four dash eight six nine Groton Public Schools DODEA MCASP grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no, and raise your hands. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, all right, we're gonna go back into the order of business. All right, I'm gonna pass it over to the town manager, Mr. Bert, to give us the update of the town manager.
Good evening, not a lot to report tonight, but first the financials. Preliminary fund balances as of June thirtieth, 24, unaudited, is approximately forty point seven million, which is twenty-seven point three percent of the FYE twenty-four general fund adopted budget. General contingency budget was adopted at two hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and forty-five thousand, eight ninety-four still remains. I do, I am expecting fourth quarter transfers later for the police department and possibly IT, so we will have some things coming through later. Capital reserve fund balance as of June thirtieth, 24, also unaudited, is six hundred and ninety-one thousand. A few updates, former school properties, it was already mentioned, we're looking for people to be on the bid review committees. We anticipate Groton Heights will start meeting fairly soon, I believe the bids are due in December second, so we'll be probably do a pre-meeting to go over the process and then jump into that soon. And then the Pleasant Valley bids are due on January third, I believe. Human Services, for everyone out there, the Thanksgiving holiday distribution day is on eleven, is on November twenty-second, from nine AM to four PM at Human Services. And then we're also working on a donation link on our website so people can more easily donate to Human Services, so excited to hopefully get that running soon. Nautilus Dock, which has been an ongoing several-year project where we have a grant to put in a dock at the Subforce Museum, that is finally under construction, hopefully done in the next few weeks. The litter vacuum that you graciously approved last month is under order, we're hoping to have it by the spring. The, we're interviewing for assistant, I'm not interviewing, but interviewing for Assistant Director of Public Works right now. Let's see, a couple of bids, the, in case you're getting complaints or notice that when the line striping was put on Flanders Road, it was put at the wrong width. We were actually increasing the width for the bike lanes, pedestrian lanes, so they were going through blasting, they weren't gonna tear up the cement or the, the concrete there, the pavement, so they started blasting that, their equipment broke, so hopefully that's gonna be repaired soon. They were almost done taking out the wrong lines, but soon the right lines will be, it's going from three foot to four foot on the edges, and there's a lot of pedestrian traffic along there, so hopefully that'll be done soon. Construction on the bridge joints on Meridian Street Bridge begins on November eighteenth. They'll be alternating traffic for approximately two weeks. And then we're finally getting going on the police locker room, which has taken a long time and rebid multiple times. HVAC works, HVAC works and begins soon, but the lockers take until May to get, so it's a long lead time, so it's gonna take a while to finish that up. Jen Mealy, the library director, is working to put together a group for the United States' semi-quintcentennial, two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. The federal government, as well as the states, trying to get every community to participate, so there'll be some activities put together for that. And that is all I have, but welcome, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bert. I open up the floor for any questions for the town manager.
And I will send this out, like I have been tonight.
Thank you. All right, we are moving on, thank you very much, Mr. Bert. Economic development, I believe that everybody received in their agenda pack of the update from the economic development.
And just to mention, at the next meeting, John Reiner, the plan director, will be joining us to give a presentation along with the new economic development manager, Corinne Piazza, so that's gonna be at the next meeting.
Great, thank you. And that'll be in December. Thank you. All right, we are passing along from the report from the superintendent. She is out of town, so, and again, we already got an update from her at our last meeting, which we were very happy to get. Committee reports, moving on, community development and services, no report, no committee? Right, yeah, all right. I'm gonna recognize Chair Massett, she has a, oh yeah, we already did that, moving on, moving on, suspend the rules, remember that? Okay. Skip along to I four, finance, Chairman Powers, I'll recognize you, you have two items for us to act upon tonight. You could, if you wanted to read the minutes for the first item, two zero two four dash nine two one, ARPA funds reallocation, then we'll address that, and then we'll go, and then do like we do, rinse and repeat.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you.
Okay, we called a meeting to order at six o'clock this evening. Representatives Dean Shinbra, Fritchie, Gardner, Pulaski, and Umwos were present, and myself. Our new business was the American Rescue Plan Act Funds Reallocation. I'd like to ask Representative Pulaski to read into the record that, resolution, please?
Resolution authorizing the reallocation of excess American Rescue Plan Act funds returned to the town prior to December thirty-first, 2026, whereas the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA, was a federal stimulus package enacted to help address the COVID-19 pandemic and its economic impact by providing funds to municipalities for uses such infrastructure, public services, and overall economic recovery. And whereas the Groton Town Council allocated ARPA funds toward various eligible purposes, ranging from town projects to community partner initiatives, in multiple rounds taking place in fall 2021, spring 2022, spring 2023, fall 2023, and spring 2024, totaling eight million, five hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and four cents. And whereas there is currently four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars in excess ARPA funds, which have been returned to the town resulting from previously obligated ARPA projects being performed under budget, no longer requiring the full amount of previously allocated funds, not occurring as originally proposed or for other reasons, returned ARPA funds, and whereas per ARPA requirements, ARPA funds must be obligated by December thirty-first, 2024, with a deadline of expenditure by December thirty-first, 2026. And as such, the Town Council must reallocate the returned ARPA funds toward other eligible purposes that were obligated prior to December thirty-first, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the Groton Town Council hereby real allocates the returned ARPA funds to the following eligible purposes, which were obligated prior to December thirty-first, 2024. Sutton Park revitalization, two hundred and forty-two thousand dollars, or, two thousand, two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six dollars. Town of Groton Housing Rehabilitation and Home Buyer's Assistance Program, two hundred thousand dollars, and Human Services Assistance Programs, fifty thousand dollars. It may be further resolved that John Burton is capacity as Town Manager B, and hereby is authorized and directed to prepare and execute on behalf of the town an inter-agency agreement or memorandum of understanding with each town department or agency managing the aforementioned ARPA projects to confirm the reallocation of ARPA funds, too, and the total amount of ARPA funds obligated towards each such project. May it be further resolved, in the event additional excess ARPA funds beyond the returned ARPA funds already reallocated above or returned to the town at any time prior to December thirty-first, 2026, that the Groton Town Council hereby makes an automatic contingent reallocation of all such additional excess funds to the Town of Groton Housing Rehabilitation and Home Buyer's Assistance Program, for which ARPA funds were previously obligated for eligible uses prior to December thirty-first, 2024, and refer the item to the RTM per Rule six point five point three, so moved.
Second.
All right, thank you for that lengthy.
Resolution.
Resolution, I appreciate it, so it was moved by Pulaski, seconded by Good. All right, I open up the floor, Chair, if you wanted to just summarize what your discussion was?
Yeah, we had a few questions. Manager Bert answered some, it was basically about the funding for the human assistance program and the home buyer program. We had some other questions as far as the Sutton Park revitalization, and Director Berry was in our meeting, and he answers those questions, had to do with when the project was to begin, and that was pretty much it, so.
Thank you.
The motion passed six to zero to zero.
All right, is there any other further discussion on the item on the floor? Representative Aubrey, we are, thank you, we're just giving you a heads-up, Rep. Aubrey, we are acting upon the item for ARPA reallocation right now.
Thank you very much.
Okay?
I apologize for being late.
We're just happy you're here.
You're here, thank you.
So we have twenty-seven members present. Is there any other further discussion on this main motion on the floor?
Yeah, I can tell we have to vote for it.
All right. All right, so with seeing no discussion, item two zero two four dash nine two one, American Rescue Plan Act Funds Reallocation, the amount is four hundred and ninety-two thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars, being allocated to Sutton Park Town of Groton Housing Assistance Program and Human Services. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries unanimously, twenty-seven in favor. No opposed, no abstentions. Thank you. On to the next one.
Our next was three point two, twenty twenty-four dash eight seventy-seven dash for Sutton Park renovations, I'll ask Representative Dean Shinbra to read the resolution, please?
Resolution approving additional funds for renovations to Sutton Park, whereas the Town Council set a goal to complete the needed improvements at the Town Sutton Park, and whereas the estimated cost for completion of Sutton Park renovations is one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars. And whereas the Town wishes to expend American Rescue Plan Act funds and general fund, fund balance, to complete the Sutton Park project, now therefore be it resolved that the Town Council approves the appropriation of one million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars for completion of the Sutton Park renovation project, with two hundred and forty-two thousand, two hundred and forty-six of the cost coming from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and the remaining one million, four hundred and seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars from the capital project fund balance, and to refer the matter to the RTM per Rule six point five point three.
Thank you.
Okay, motion was moved by Representative Dean Shinbra, seconded by Good. All right, if you just want to give us a?
Yeah, we, we looked over, talking about different things with Director Berry, as to how we were thinking of memorial trees, bench contributions, different things that we discussed as far as the project and the direction that it was going in, when it was to start, and pretty much we passed at six to zero to zero.
Okay. All right, I open up the floor for discussion on this motion on the floor. Very well, seeing none, I will call for a vote on item two zero two four dash eight seven.
Excuse me, I didn't put my hand up high. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Are you, if you're into it, I'll.
Go ahead.
Okay, I'd like to ask the town manager, if he'd be kind enough, I think I'm totally with this particular project, but could you possibly bring us up to date on the project across the way? What we might be doing on the, the athletic facility that we were talking about doing, where the school is now?
Well, can we just hold off on that, since this is not related to this? If you want to bring that up on the, on the other business, that would be great?
I'd be happy to do that, but I personally thought it kind of reflects on the money we're spending here, so I understand, and I'll wait.
Thank you, Rep. Aubrey.
No problem.
Appreciate it. All right, I'm gonna call for the vote on two zero two four eight seven seven Sutton Park renovations, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no, or raise your hands.
No.
Any abstentions? All right, and just to let you know, Representative Perella is in the room, so there is twenty-eight members present, so that item passes, twenty-seven in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. Representative Burrell. All right, thank you very much, okay, if you could just.
We adjourned at six-thirty.
Okay.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
All right, motion was made by Chair Powers to approve the minutes for the Finance Committee, seconded by Representative Good, is there any question on approval of the minutes? All righty, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. All right, motion carries to approve the minutes unanimously. All right. Thank you, Rep. Powers. All right, public safety, no committee, no report.
Correct.
All right, public works, no committee, no report.
No, correct.
All right, recreation and rules and procedures.
Council approves the appropriation of $1,715,133 for completion of the Sutton Park renovation project, with $242,246 of the cost coming from the American Rescue Plan Act funds, and the remaining $1,472,877 from the capital project fund balance, and to refer the matter to the RTM per Rule 6.5.3.
Thank you.
Okay, motion was moved by Representative Dean Shinra, seconded by Good. All right, if you just want to give us a?
Yeah, we, we looked over, talking about different things with Director Berry, as to how we were thinking of memorial trees, bench contributions, different things that we discussed as far as the project and the direction that it was going in, when it was to start. Pretty much, we passed at six to zero to zero.
Okay. All right, I open up the floor for discussion on this motion on the floor. Very well, seeing none, I will call for a vote on Item 2024-87.
Excuse me, I didn't put my hand up high. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
If you're into it, I'll.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to ask the Town Manager, if he'd be kind enough, I think I'm totally with this particular project, but could you possibly bring us up to date on the project across the way? What we might be doing on the, the athletic facility that we were talking about doing, where the school is now?
Well, can we just hold off on that, since this is not related to this? If you want to bring that up on the, on the other business, that would be great?
I'd be happy to do that, but I personally thought it kind of reflects on the money we're spending here. It's what I understand, and I'll wait.
Thank you, Rep. Obree. Appreciate it. All right, I'm going to call for the vote on 2024-877, Sutton Park Renovations. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no, or raise your hands.
No.
Any abstentions? All right, and just to let you know, Representative Perella is in the room, so there is 28 members present, so that item passes. 27 in favor, one opposed, no abstentions. Representative Perella. All right, thank you very much. Okay, if you could just.
We adjourned at 6:30.
Okay.
Make motion to approve the minutes.
All right, motion was made by Chair Powers to approve the minutes for the Finance Committee, seconded by Representative Good. Is there any question on approval of the minutes? All righty. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions. All right, motion carries to approve the minutes unanimously. All right. Thank you, Rep. Powers. All right. Public Safety, no committee, no report. All right, Public Works, no committee, no report.
No, correct.
All right. Recreation and Rules and Procedures, Chair Watson, no committees, no reports, correct?
Nothing, yeah, you're right.
Thank you very much. All right, and Liaison Reports, Item J, do we have any liaison reports for this evening? Rep. Obree?
Yes, I was just at the EDC meeting, and the, they have, the officers of the EDC Committee are accepted going forward for another year in the same positions. They set up their schedule, and they have several, they're working with the new director to understand the process that's going to be presented to the public, I believe, again, on how, how they're requiring and handling the acquisitions of properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Not acquisitions, sales. Sorry, wrong word.
Thank you. Representative Wells, do you have anything from the Golf, Golf World?
I do, I do.
If you could please share that.
We had a meeting Monday, and I'd say probably the headline is that they are beginning to notice the effect of too many members. It's affecting the revenue of the course. Looking at July, September, and October, the year-over-fiscal year-to-date was down 4.7% in July. Again, September, down 12.5% compared to the previous fiscal year period, and October, 7.7.
Wow.
The four-year fiscal year-to-date numbers were all up slightly, 1.6, 7.77, and 5.8%. So we're not actually dropping off the cliff, but the trend is that we're getting less revenue. And this, one of the effects of this is that we've been, most recently, they're completing work on the, on the CIP for the bunkers on five and seven. And that has been paid out of the Gulf Coast Surplus Fund. And if we, if revenue keeps trailing off, we're not going to have the surpluses to spend on capital improvements. Also of note, they're conducting a survey, and they're con-
You're still on, Mr. Wells?
Hold on, there's a phone ringing, I gotta.
Okay.
Hold on.
Okay, they're having a survey on Facebook. If you see 600 responses, anyway, if you complete the survey of golfers, your chance of winning a foursome with a golf cart at a value of $300. And let's see, hang out, you know, the Women's Golf Association is having some events that have been well attended, and they're moving along, but they're trying to, they need to fix this thing with the, probably with the members, is the members get a day early, get to reserve, or get to reserve a tee time a day before the general public. And it's sort of, it cuts down on the tee times available for general public, who would pay more for it. Anyway, so we'll see. There are another meeting in December, and we'll see if they come up with any fixes for this creeping decline of revenue. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Yes, I would like to suggest, I did fill out my golf course survey, it's through Survey Monkey, if you're using Facebook. You can access it through the Shenakasit Golf Course Facebook page, www.surveymonkey.com/r/vbn7qxx. So if you're at home and you do it on the web, you could just do it through there as well, if you're not using social media or anything like that. Highly recommend you help fill that survey out. Is there any other liaison reports? Okay. On to Item K, Budget Discussion. Is there any budget discussions that we'd like to discuss? Mr. Manager?
I'll just mention, we're just getting going on, we're receiving capital improvement project forms from the different departments, Board of Ed, et cetera, so we'll start compiling them soon, and I'll start reviewing. And just looking at personnel items, we're at the initial phases, so it has begun, though.
Okay. If you have any questions for the Town Manager from now to March, please let us know. We'll be happy to answer them. Yes, Representative Obree, Budget Discussion?
I'm wondering if maybe in a future meeting, John, you might be able to talk with us about what I was speaking about tonight, the new recreational facility. What's that?
I'm doing new business.
I can't hear you.
Yeah, we'll just move on. We're on other business, so it sounds, sounds good. All right?
Well, I'm just trying to give them a warning.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
I appreciate that.
Membership is requesting a summary and outlook on what's happening across the street at the Claude Chester property, which is going to be reused as athletic fields, is that correct? And I don't want to speak for you, but we're, I guess, what I would be interested in, as well as Representative Obree, in seeing how the connectivity of all those properties mesh with Sutton Park, Paquonic Plains, and the future site of all those athletic fields. Does that sound about right?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much.
All right, I knew exactly what you were thinking.
And what I would start with, and we'd be, we'd be happy to come back and put that on the agenda, but you should start with, there was a public presentation on September 26th of the latest information. That information, feedback is being compiled now, and there'll be another public presentation. And I will, with my report tonight, I'll send you the link to the video. That gives you all the latest information.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
But be glad to answer any questions after that, or come back with Mark.
Great.
I'm sending it out right now.
Okay, because, because again, nothing's finalized, but there are some concepts out there, and based on that meeting that happened on September 26th, 2024, which, for the public, I would highly recommend you take a look at. It is available on the Groton Municipal Television website. You can always look it up and, and take a look at what is out there for the needs of the community. All right. Any other, other business before I act on this one other item? Yes, Representative Dean Shinra, followed by McKelroy.
Thank you very much. I don't know if this is an RTM thing or not, but I thought maybe a referral to public safety, about, is there a way that we can do a reverse 911 about the red flag warning? Young people in my neighborhood have campfires Halloween night, and I envisioned my neighborhood going up in flames, and it's congested area, and they were totally unaware. When I went over and spoke to them, they were fine about it, but totally unaware, so.
I could take care of that.
Thank you.
Okay, and again, I don't think we actually had a, did we have a fire ban in town at that point?
The fire ban just went into place Friday afternoon, last Friday afternoon on the 8th.
Yeah, so.
And the same, the city did one at the same time as the, within a half hour of each other.
Okay, so again, just for the public out there, I know it's beautiful fall evenings, but no flames, okay, because it's tinderbox out there, all right? We had a couple of wildfires down at Rocky Neck, where it shut down the park, and they're still going down there right now to cut some of those limbs and big trees, because there's hotspots inside the dead growth of those trees, so they want to make sure that they stamp it all out. And I know it's, I know if you're a smoker out there, don't flick your cigarette butts, please, because that can catch real quick, so please keep your butts in the car, I know it might smell, but just take a can or something, and then throw it out after.
Hope our butt stays in.
Yeah. Got me on that one. All right, Representative McKelroy, did you have anything?
No.
Okay. Any other, other business from the group? All right, I am going to our last item here, it's Item 2024-988, Groton RTM 2025 Regular Meeting Schedule. It is on the back, is one of these supporting documents, I'm trying to get to it. So I am going to entertain a motion to move Item 2024-988, Groton RTM 2025 Regular Meeting Schedule, and the regular meeting schedule is as follows. Wednesday, January 8th, 2025; Wednesday, February 12th, 2025; Wednesday, March 12th, 2025; Wednesday, April 9th, 2025; Wednesday, May 14th, 2025; Wednesday, June 11th of '25; Wednesday, July 9th of '25; Wednesday, August 13th, '25; Wednesday, September 10th of 2025; Wednesday, October 8th, 2025; Wednesday, November 12th, 2025; Wednesday, December 10th, 2025; and Wednesday, January 14th, 2026. All right, need a second? All right, moved by Dean Shinra, seconded by Good. Just to be clear, we always have our meetings on the second Wednesday of every month. I have checked, and I know the clerks have double-checked, to make sure that these are all falling on the second Wednesdays, so we are in compliance.
Thank you.
And if there's any other discussion, I'll entertain it, otherwise I will call for a vote. All right, I'm going to call for a vote for the acceptance of the RTM Regular Meeting Schedule for 2025. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All right, all those opposed, please say no. Abstentions, motions carry, motion carries unanimously. And again, this doesn't, now that it's approved, remember, we still have our special meeting, which is the budget that is going to be coming up as well, so that's not included in this, so just make sure you bring your caffeine and all that other stuff that's going to keep you awake for those long meetings, so there we go. All right, last but not least, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, motion was moved by Obree, seconded by Dean Shinra. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Thank you for coming. All right, everybody have a great holiday Thanksgiving, all right? Do not fry your turkeys in the house, and we will see you soon. Don't, don't put a frozen one in there either. It's not a good one. You've got to thaw that thing out for like five days.
Excellent.
I got it somewhere on one of my things to invite you guys.